My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll put the minutes of this meeting from July twenty first. There's no issues, we need a motion to accept.
Make a motion, they'll accept the minutes from July twenty first.
Second.
I'll move.
Uh, Department of Reports. Jimmy, you want to go?
I just got the list of runs so far for the month and the year. Right now, total of a hundred and twenty-two. They're all broken down on there by month and runs. And that's the hundred and twenty-two, this come runs from November first to October thirtieth is what I keep track of for our department. Which hopefully it's down from last year, because last year we had right at two hundred runs, so, but we still got three months to go. Uh, truck six two's being repaired, don't really know what's wrong with it, but they took it up to Richmond, it wouldn't start, they finally got it started. I don't know if it's fuel pump or something, but it's, it's out of service right now. I haven't heard anything today, we're supposed to call today and see what it was.
Good. Anything else? Anyone have anything for Jim? All right, thank you.
Matt?
Uh, just want to let you know I did, uh, set up a meeting with Comcast, they were here back in April to discuss fiber optic. Uh, we did get a meeting set up, we're gonna meet August the fourteenth in a teams meeting, um, to discuss the northeast corner of town. Like what the layout would be, so I'm kinda sketchy area figuring out what they've got on their maps and they're gonna, we're just gonna meet with the teams instead of doing a walkthrough first so we can kinda see where we're at. But that, that's set up for August fourteenth and then we'll proceed from there and then, once we see what happens with that, they might be back in to talk to you folks about what, what they can do, what they can't do.
Anything else?
Nope.
You want to get any questions or anything for Matt?
I don't have anything, you're right. I can talk.
All right, I appreciate it, guys. Salania's business. Stop sign request, high and positive streets. You guys, either bearin' looked at, think about it?
I know a few, a couple times.
I agree with the, pretty much with the statement you made at the last meeting, we've got enough stop signs in town and...
Yeah.
I, other than the fact there is not a sidewalk there, I, I don't know that it, the two correlating the deans installing a stop sign because of the pedestrian traffic.
Yeah, I feel like the bigger issue is the sidewalk, which we can't do anything about.
There's, there's sidewalk going down the north side of, of the street, uh, you know. I came to walk one of those sidewalks, so, uh, the street, um, you were going to check something with us.
There, no, there is no reasons other than we would, the homeowner would be responsible for putting sidewalks up through there. The only thing I was gonna, uh, talk about to see is if we could put children play signs up, you know, if that would help them maybe in that area. You know, on High Street to see if that would maybe help out, but I'm not sure if that's an issue, you know, if that would help slow traffic, but that, that's the only thing I would, I mean that I would recommend that we might be able to try to do possibly from our side, you know, without other than installing sidewalks. You know, from what I seen unless you guys decide.
But was there, was there a problem or anything if we decide to go with the stop sign, to put a stop sign there?
No, we can put the stop signs up there, that's fine. That's just, you guys gotta, you guys decide to, then we'll have to, we'll just have to put them in.
I think we should skip out on the stop signs. I think it's the sidewalks, that's the bigger issue and we have no control, so. Everyone in agreement on that? I think, I'm not in favor of it. Moving on then. Uh, Melissa Stevens, Arlene Thompson?
Melinda.
Melinda.
I was giving the note, it was Melissa.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Is it possible to get an ordinance on feral cats?
Here's your problem with feral cats, um, it's, it's a multifaceted situation with cats. Cats are not regularly, I don't want to take, given attention in state code. Primarily it's given primarily to dogs, the only time they really deal with cats is pet shops, that type of stuff. Um, and our, our, even our own ordinance book is not, it doesn't deal with cats either.
Can we possibly get one?
Now, I did go look, my son is actually having the same problem up at his house in Dyer, where there's a lady next door, I mean, she's got cats that are the size of small dogs that are coming to eat. And it's been causing a lot of problems. Now, their ordinance, it's, it's quite lengthy, but it's still, you can't really do anything with them. They're basically, they, all it really says is that the homeowner or not to feed them, that type of stuff, in hopes that they'll go away.
Oh, she feeds them.
Oh, yeah, so the same with my son's neighbor. Um, you know, uh, the guys have in their packets, I asked, I put on, on the clerk treasures listserv, does anybody have any ordinances? They did say something about some guy in Elkhart that is like this renowned, uh, animal control officer that we should get in touch with him. I did after, I put this in the packet, somebody said that we ought to, that we, if we can catch them, then go ahead and have them spayed and then return them back. But that's not gonna deal with the, that feeding problem, because they're all gonna just keep coming back. So, um, it'll be up to them how far they want to, to take that, uh, because also what you got too is enforcement.
Because it's, she's got a female cat she keeps outside, well, she's probably got about four of them, and they're constantly getting pregnant. She stops people in the middle of the road, your cat came and got my cat pregnant, now you need to deal with it.
If you see food out there, you can't do something about it, I mean, that's just feeding.
And when they, when she has the kittens, she'll shoo them off, so they're other people's problems. I mean, I'm gonna start trapping them and taking them off, what am I supposed to do if I'm having, make somebody else's problem? I mean, that's, you know, or something else?
Yeah, and I understand your concern, I hear this quite a bit from around town, I have the same issue over.
So, there should be something done.
Um, this is definitely something that I would like to look into a little more, as far as what can be done, I know our answer tied on a lot of it. I mean, you get into some financials and what are you gonna do with the cats, you know, who you go pay to take care of them, all that stuff.
This should be her, she's the one bringing them up and get, letting them get pregnant and not caring for.
At Dyer, my son had to take pictures of the cats in, I mean, there's a ton of them, and they, they're going into his yard and they're...
Yeah.
They're messing in his yard and, you can see the little pathway.
They're even digging my flowers up because the dirt is fresh and they're digging it up so they can go potty in it.
He don't sit up front anymore because they sprayed our wood porch so much, it stinks.
Um, I know there are certain things that, you know, you can do as far as finding, you know, like if they are, but you have to have proof. Just finding them until basically they stop, is what they were hoping to do with this neighbor up to.
See the food sitting there isn't that?
I mean, she's got bulls out for them right now.
But you still have to catch the cats there, that's, I know that's.
They're there right now.
Yeah, they're always there.
That's up to them on how far they wanna pursue that, if they want to look at the ordinances, um, that's available American League Publishing, publishing, um, but that's up to them, um, as far as.
I mean, she, her cat just had kittens, now there's another one pregnant.
Yeah, that's, like she said, we have to look at ordinance and we have to look at how we could probably adapt our ordinance to meet the criteria for what we need to do. So, it would be a still process, but it's something I would like to look at because I do hear this complaint quite a bit, like I said, I do have this complaint myself. Um, I don't know where you guys stand with it, but there's definitely a cat issue.
Yeah.
I understand.
Cause I mean, I can even sit on, I still like to sit on my front porch, but the urine smell is just terrible.
What area of town are we talking about?
West Seminary.
Sycamore.
Sycamore, sorry.
Sycamore.
Start with an S.
She is close. It's just horrible, and if you walk by her house, you can smell it, it's just really, yeah. I was sitting on her porch with her and I said, I don't wanna be mean, but do you not smell that?
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sorry, but.
Yeah, I understand. Um, I appreciate you coming and, and talking about that because I think it needs brought to light, I really do.
Thank you.
So, does anyone else have anything, ordinance?
What on earth?
You know, and, and our dogs' ordinance, you know, you gotta maintain them on a leash and all those kinda stuff. They're, you know, they're not supposed to be running without a leash or, um, and that happens, I mean.
Yeah, there's one down below us that does it.
Uh, and even, more or less if the property owner, the owner of the dog wants to keep them in, they put up a fence like I have.
That's, that's me too.
But you can't do that with cats, they're gonna.
Looking at like twelve cats, uh, to one or two dogs, I can handle one or two dogs.
Yeah.
But not all of them.
Well, I think even in our ordinance, there is a limit on dogs.
Terrible on cats, no.
See, cats are not dealt with in the ordinances and such, because you can't leash them, you can't keep them in a gate, you know, it's really hard, you know, they don't have, most of them don't wear leashes, so you can say, oh, that belongs to someone's home, so. Yeah, so, no, ours, if we deal with cats, we deal with them as more of like a dan, if they were a dangerous animal, or, um, if people were unfit to keep animals. That's the only thing that really deals with, with cats in this, in this book.
You guys have anything else?
Um, I will just, we, Matt and I have the same problem in our neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's dealt with.
You have dealt with it? How?
It's dealt with.
However you don't.
They're relocated.
Okay, so that's.
So, I should just start trapping them?
That's.
I wouldn't have to.
That's what I would recommend.
I'm gonna have to take care of her mess so she can create more.
Yeah.
You don't get the numbers, you're gonna get.
I take care of my dog and I keep it in my yard, I don't let it go in her yard.
Right.
But her cat comes over and digs all my flowers up, I'm gonna have to replant them.
I get it, I mowed through a bunch of.
So, I just need to take her out back.
Animal waste.
It's rental property, can we say something to the home owner?
Uh, you can, yeah.
I, yeah, I don't have.
That'd be a good place to start.
Yeah, that'd be a good place.
Cause she keeps them upstairs too in her house, cause her house is empty, and you look upstairs in her window and there's cats up there.
She makes holes in her foundation so they can get under the house and out of the weather.
I would sort of say something to the actual owner, like I said, this is, as you can tell, it's a problem all over town. Um, so, I'd be more happy to look further into it and see what we can do, but like I said, it's, this is something that's gonna happen next meeting, it's gonna take some, take some time and unfortunately we just.
Just a fine or two would probably stop her or slow her down.
Yep.
But we gotta get an ordinance.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Yep, um, but like I said, I appreciate you guys coming and bringing that up. Anything else?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
Are we excused?
That's all we got to say about that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, moving on, the removal of trees, the tree list.
That's the list, that Matt.
Well, that's, I just, yes, so I went through and just started, um, you know, we started talking the last meeting about trimming the trees and going through all of it and, and so forth. Um, so as you can see in your packet, I went through, I gave you a copy of what the ordinance says and our, you guys act as a tree board or the town council acts as the tree board now. Um, but there's a copy of our ordinance and then I went through, took pictures of the trees, now granted, my timestamp, some of my addresses aren't exactly, you know, accurate, that's why I put the front page to it. But those are the trees so far.
So, the list is the correct address?
The, the list is the correct address.
That should match the G I S.
That should match the G I S.
But the photo may not.
But the photo might not, just because depending on if I'm standing on which side of the road, sometimes it won't, it won't adjust to the, to that. Um, but that, you know, I tried, kinda went through, got a partial list started, I haven't done anything, uh, on the west side, I just got, and then we got busy. So, I, I wanted to get you guys a list to get started so you could at least see where we're at. Um, and then, you know, if you got questions, you know, whatever, but that's, that's totally up to you guys on how it's handled and, but those are the dangerous ones. Obviously, the one at one twenty-three East High Street took care of itself last week for us, um, it fell, and the homeowner did take care of cleaning it up the rest of the way. We got it out of the roadway and then he did ha, have it cleaned up, and then he is in the process of getting the sidewalk fixed up there also.
Is that across from Brad's?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it, it fell last Monday night, so it is, uh, and I'd already got this into Melissa, so it was into the packet, that's why it, uh...
We, uh, say, you know, go with it or whatever we decide to do, what's your procedure gonna be in regards to where to start, are we gonna start by street, by?
That, no, that's kinda, well, that's kinda your guys' decision on how you wanna do it, the way the board, or the way the ordinance, I mean, we give them that, we give them up to sixty days to get it taken care of and then, I, I mean, I don't know, that's, that's what you guys, I just... I guess I'm doing the homework and you guys just tell me how you want me to proceed, I mean, I don't, I don't have a rule.
They say go, take care of all Seminary Street, that's what you'd be doing then, rather than going hopscotching around town.
Well, we, what if you read the, I think if you read the ordinance, we'll send them a letter telling them they got sixty days to get it.
Yes.
So, there's no.
That's what I mean, if we.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I'm gonna go, I, I guess you're saying that's up to us.
Yeah, correct, I mean, I'm just giving, I just done this and you guys say, okay, Matt, this is a list of fourteen trees, you know, let's process, let's get a letter, uh, made up and then we'll send out to the residents, giving them, I think it's sixty days, and if they don't have it done within the sixty days, in that event, then we... Then we will contact the tree trimming service and have them removed and added to their property tax. So, I mean, I wasn't like picking a different street or this area, these are what trees need to be done, so I'm just.
Yeah, well, I understand, but I mean, let's take Seminary, there's a lot on Seminary.
Uh-huh.
I, I don't know, you know, that's gonna, if we do everything on Seminary Street, that's gonna take about half of, oh, you know what I'm saying? Uh, rather than going one off Seminary Street and one off, you know, hopscotching around town, that's what I'm asking.
I'm, I'm, I guess I'm lost, Jerry, I don't understand what you're asking me, what do you mean like to?
Are you saying, so the whole street's not bald?
No, 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 I mean, you got the numbers of here on Seminary Street, if once we start this, are we just gonna do, not just do, but like say, do Seminary, get it done, and then go to another street?
No, I think, I think we take that list and us as councilmen, after he's brought it to us, we need to go look at those and if we decide that, yeah, that probably has come down for safety reasons, um, then we have.
In other words, we can.
Send out letters.
We could pick and choose, rather than just saying, do everything on Seminary Street.
Right.
Or we could do that, we could say, do everything on.
I think we just take that list and look at it and what needs to come down, we said needs to come down and all on Seminary is all on.
But then after we choose that, then we send out just those letters to the ones that we've chosen, right?
The park.
That, yeah, that, so, yeah, so we'll say in here, yeah, however you got, I mean, what the ordinance says is that, am I right, Melissa, that's why?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, and they got sixty days to, to finish that or to do that, and then if not, then we proceed from ourselves.
Yeah, I've looked at most of them.
Yeah, I guess we'll look at them and we come back next meeting and decide if we wanna move forward with any of those.
And is trim, trimming an option or is it all or nothing?
It, so.
Cause some of these have a lot of green and there's just some dead branches sticking out of them.
Yeah.
The only thing I done was I went around.
The tax will have the right to cause the removal of any dead or diseased trees on private property, um...
Or the part that's unsafe. So.
So, we could tr, have dead parts trimmed?
I had a, I had two trees removed, one of them I knew had to go, but the other one was pretty good shade, but he, the guy that cut it down said in two years, it would be in the same shape as the other one. So, you'd be going back and on that part, if, if it still had a lot of green in them, but a lot of dead in them too, you might be going back and going through the whole process again, so you'd have to evaluate, but I mean, that's.
Well, I think we just need to take time, look at them and decide what we wanna do. Anyone else have anything else on the trees?
Potential increase.
Okay, in your packet, you received a copy of the notice from the county, they are looking into the possibility of adjusting, which means increasing the rate on the lit tax, which is basically your local income tax. Um, that would affect us in the fact that county has total control over these taxes, we have no say. So, if they want to, let's say, raise it, um, point five percent, the county will raise it point five percent, and we will be quote unquote the beneficiaries of that, we will also receive that increase of point five percent or whatever. Um, all they do, are doing right now is notifying us of the possibility, I know they're working, their county council is working with Baker Tilly. Um, so what that means is that we could possibly, depending on which funds they're picking to increase, that would affect our edit and our public safety law. I'm guessing that they'll probably increase the public safety law because with the public safety law, we primarily only, we've done it once where we paid for an extra officer, when we were in the midst of doing some trainings and, I can't remember exactly, um, what was going on there, but we did pay for an officer there for a little while. As well as, uh, we primarily have used it mostly for equipment, but checking code, we can, if, for instance, um, and I sent Derek and Keith emails today with my thoughts on the budget so far this year. We can move, for instance, with all this stuff that's going on, I can move parts of the police department and the fire department's budget to the lit, the public safety lit. To ease the burden off the general fund, because as you know, that's probably gonna start diminishing down, uh, so that's, the possibility is coming, I look for it to happen, but at this point, they haven't set, um, what their percentage is gonna be yet.
Any questions on that? Moving on. Emergency closing discussion.
So, once again, I put in there what we discussed last week, or the last meeting, as well as, um, the city of Greenwood got back with me, in fact, he used to be my, uh, the guy from Baker Tilly that used to come and help me with, uh, my budgets and stuff once I first got started. So, um, this is what theirs says regarding emergency closures, um, once again, if you guys wanna consider, it's very somewhat similar to what the one that Jim put in, on the previous page. So, um, that's up to you guys whether you want to just leave it alone or modify it to, um, the emergency closings that Jim had modified for us.
I don't have any issues with the one that Jim has modified.
And then what I'd have to do is bring it back in a resolution to modify the employee handbook.
I think it's a good step.
All right, I'll do that.
Does this address who makes that decision for the closure?
And the, I believe in the handbook, it says, um, it's between myself and the, and the council president. Cause primarily it's gonna be, my office is gonna be the one to close, for instance, like for on, uh, level three travel advisory, snow. Matt's guys are gonna be out there, Todd's guys are gonna be out there, you know, um, my girls won't get in the office, so it's usually myself and Keith that will usually make that call. Or whoever the council president would be, whoever is.
Any other questions? I'll ask, maybe you can bring it back. Moving on, street closure, U C D C.
Their street closure request brings up just one question that I've got, if they close off the street, I would assume that they're anticipating a number of cars in this car show. Uh, people that are at the Mexican restaurant, how they gonna get out?
I believe we authorized a street closure in the same area before, but made it from...
That was for the Legion.
The east, yeah, the east side of El Barro's property up to Market, so it was basically a half block instead of the full block.
Yeah.
To address that issue in particular.
Well, they, they was having a poker, that's what.
Yeah, I think it was, it was motorcycles and stuff.
Yeah, it wasn't an all day affair like this, this is like eight A M. to five P M.
But yeah, I fully agree, Jerry, that we can't block the egress of a busy restaurant.
Why are they wanting to do High Street, are they using the, he just going up front of his office?
That link is, oh, it's from his office. Side Johnson's office.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, or he needs to move it somewhere else, maybe?
So, do you want me to email him tomorrow and say, hey, we find issues with this street closure?
Yeah, I think that would be best, like they said, could block the, the restaurant there, so he can either shorten it or...
Can he wrap around on the market, like in front of, uh, the Herald and...
The, the Scoop?
The Scoop, yeah. Old P S I building.
Well, unfortunately, you guys aren't gonna meet again until after this.
That's why I'm wondering if we could approve, prove it with that potential amendment, if he accepts that as an alternative. Other than that, we, I think we can only approve the half block and leave it at that.
Or we're painting this one block, he could go to what, Market between Union and Seminary?
Yeah.
Give him an option there.
Yeah, put in front of Campbell's.
Yeah. I mean, it's a wider street anyway.
Probably, I think that'd be better for him.
I think so too, at least give him an option, I wonder what's due. I think so too. At least give him an option. I wonder what's due. Do we do these in much?
We do.
Someone wanna make a question on all that?
Or I'd like to hear back from him and I, I can text you guys, but you cannot respond back to that text. You can respond back to me individually. I believe that's how I can do that, um, once I hear, get clarification from him. Cause he's not gonna be, cause like I said, our next meeting's eighteenth and this is the seventeenth.
I don't mind making a motion for one or the other based on what he wants to do.
I was gonna say, give him a couple of options.
Is that what you're saying?
I'm just, uh, I'm, I'm just gonna go back to him and say, hey, the, um, you know, we don't want El Raro blocked. They need to have, you know, be able to get in another parking lot. You know, where, where do you want the cars to go? Because that's to him, you know, that's, this is their car show. They need to decide.
I've got his number. Do you want me to step up and try calling real quick? Would that be easier?
That'd be fine.
What's he doing? What's he doing?
Car show.
Car show.
I don't know, yeah.
For, uh, fundraiser for Lana. You know, while you're going through some health issues like that? I don't.
And the Legion's part of it.
Maybe, he just has an intersection, High Street and Main and High Street and Market on a Sunday.
Hey, Simon, this is Ross. Uh, we are really, uh, kind of, uh, kind of, we're gonna do, uh, we're gonna do a front of the front street over. And, uh, we can't block the El Raro exit for the parking lot. Uh, so we can either do from, like in front of your building, going east to Market Street. Or if you would rather, uh, we can move it all the way over in front of, uh, on Market Street between Union and Seminary and then front of Campbell's office. We can do that motion. Yeah, yeah. Basically from the flasher, the four-way flasher, like they're union and they go south to, uh, Seminary. And from Campbell's and Ross's building and all that, probably do the motion. Yep, yep, no worries. So yeah, if you're, if you're good with that, I'll bring that as an option and we'll probably push that for. Oh. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
So he's giving the market between Union and Seminary.
We'll just need a motion for that, man.
Alright, so move it, um, make a change to his application, uh, from, close the street, close Market Street from Union to Seminary.
So.
Yeah. Second.
On paper.
June bank reconciliation. I've looked those over. Everything matches on the paperwork that we have. I'll make a motion to accept as submitted.
Give me a second. Second. On paper.
Bye. Okay, uh, update on the building. Um, I'm hoping, um, to hopefully get in here, probably the first or second week is September. Um, I will not be at this next meeting, so whatever you discuss, whatever, I will not be here. But I'm hoping that we'll, we will probably close my office up, up there for at least two days to get everything. We, now you could probably tell, we've started moving some of our stuff. It's already starting to come down here. What we can get by without for the time being. Um, but, um, it's all just gonna be a matter of trying to make sure I can get the phones and everybody on board at the same time. So that we don't have a lot of, lose a lot of time due to, due to the transition. So, um, don't be surprised if, cause I will put it out that we'll be closed at some point, um, between the first and second week of September. And then I'll do your additional appropriation for your radios will be the first meeting in September. Cause I have to, I have like two days from the time they approve it to get it to the state. So I'm just gonna wait until I'm here at that meeting, but I will not be at the present.
When will P D be working out of this building?
Soon as we say, we're gonna go all at the same time. Cause it's, primarily with that, it's more of the phones, getting the phone systems. Because, uh, what we'll have is during the day, um, Sherry will serve as like the receptionist to the police department and so forth. And then when our office is closed, those phones will switch automatically over to dispatch. That's the plan.
Hope it goes well.
I'm ready to get in, so trying.
Does anyone get anything else they wanna discuss?
I just haven't, have you had any complaints or issues with this young, young boy going around town or his lawnmower?
Not really complaints. Um, he's been going around doing yards for people. He's been down there by the post office and other yards. His grandpa goes with him. Um, have you heard anything?
By observation.
Right.
I had to follow him up. Seminary Street, no, Sycamore Street tonight. It was on the left-hand side of the street, going east. Leaving back the door.
I talked to him in the simple.
Alright, alright.
I mean, we need to have had one, well, the county did. They went out one-on-one. And the chair in the lawnmower, so, uh, that was the county that had to deal with that.
How far did they go out on one-on-one?
White water.
Yeah, man, he's driving around town doing, doing work and making money, so.
Well, not all the time. He's up in our neighborhood with his, uh, playing with the kids up there. And rode it up there without the trailer on it. He was here again, trying to do donuts in the middle of the street, I guess, I don't know.
Okay.
But I was just curious whether, if anybody had said anything, but, um, I got T-boned at, uh, four-way stop the other day. I'm a little, little nervous.
Melissa, can you refresh my memory where we are on setting up automatic payments for water bills? Is that an option? Is that something we're looking at?
I am reticent to do that, if you wanna do what they call that, because it, you would be surprised how many people call us and get upset with us over their water bills because it's two dollars over what they normally pay. And if that's already coming out as a, what do you wanna call it? A transaction to the checking, they're checking whatever, I'm, like I said, I'm very reticent to do that. And it's something I, I've talked to Baker T- or not Baker Tilly, to voice about, um, it would cost to set it up, um. That, that would, I would have to look at, Ross, cause I, I really, I'm not for it, I'll be honest. I really not, um, just for those reasons.
That is the only bill in our household that we have to walk down with a check and dump it in a box or.
We can sign it online.
Well.
Isn't that an additional fee?
Mm-hmm. It's more than likely, I would venture to say, if you wanna do it that, that way as well with the transaction, where it automatically comes out, there may be that too.
It's point zero zero one five percent.
But then you also have to understand, the state says, okay, Melissa, you can only, I can, I have to charge a flat fee. I can't, if your water bill's two hundred dollars, is a seventy-five, I have to charge you a flat fee, three dollars. You both paid the same thing. So if you do percentages, I can't do that. I have to do a flat rate.
Okay.
So that would be.
As, as a handling fee, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So even if you took the most expensive water bill in town, say two hundred dollars times point zero zero one five percent, that's what? Twenty-seven cents or something? Charge everybody twenty-seven cents.
Well, like I said, but then, then that's getting a little ridiculous on them. But it's depending on what I, what I can do and what can be offered. So I can address that, but I'm not doing that until I get in the building. I've got enough on the plate with budget in the building right now.
Anything else? I'm gonna be in Germany. Give me a second.
Second.
On paper.
Alright.